Plan hopefully here the next council session to have legislation to bring that up for discussion, to make that a full-time position. And so if you have any questions or concerns, please get those to me about making a full-time recreation director position for the city of Mount Vernon. I think it's important because I do think that position can bring in grants to the city. There's a lot of grants out there. At ODNR, multiple divisions, parks, watercraft, natural reserves, and preserves, Division of Wildlife, they all have full-time grant writers for each of those divisions within the department, just to bring grants to each separate division. And you know, like myself, I think there's at least three grants that I know of off the top of my head that someone from the city could be applying to each year for the Department of Natural Resources that could be used in our city parks. And the city's done an excellent job getting those large ODNR grants. But to have someone as the point person to continue to work on those, I think is a very positive thing for the city. So if you have things, get those to me. But I'm planning on having some legislation drawn up to present that to council for consideration.
Is that it?
That's pretty much it.
All right, we will move on to the Edgewood Road Improvement Streets and Public Buildings, Mr. Severns.
Yes. So council, I just want, we're going to discuss a little bit here, Resolution 2024-23 on Edgewood Road. And I just want to make it clear to us as a council that this is, this resolution is limiting, limited to asking us as a council to authorize the city service director, Mr. Sayers, and those he assigns to advertise for design and to enter into a contract for design of Edgewood Road. This resolution is not approving any facet of construction. So I just want us to make sure that we keep that clear as we're looking at this resolution moving forward. And basically at this time, I want to turn this over to Mr. Sayers and the mayor to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Severns. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Severns. And I think we had a very good meeting today as we discussed a lot of the comments that we heard on, on March 6th. I thank everybody for showing up and expressing those concerns. After we listened to some of the things that were said, we looked more at the legislation, looking at that ODOT language that was in there. And Mr. Ball, Mr. Boran, some folks in engineering reached out to ODOT because a lot of that language is taken from, and maybe Mr. Ball can come up to the podium now. Some of that ODOT language is, is prescribed to us, but we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, utilizing the phraseology that they use. That way we were, you know, making sure that it was aligning with our project. But that way we were reflecting what we were pursuing with the community. We adopted the language that more adequately reflected what we were aiming to do. So what, what, yeah, well, what we were proposing. So what is the new language that we are going to be identifying? So we're dropping from widening to?
Yeah, what, what is this on? Maybe it is. Okay. Yeah, so the, the language we got from ODOT, I think they didn't, they were maybe in a little bit of a hurry to put this together. So we, we took what was, was said in the public meeting, we went back to ODOT. The intent has never been to do widening or major widening as, as they had worded it. This is a reconstruction project. So what, what Rob has done in conjunction with ODOT, we will be proposing a amendment to basically reword this document to incorporate the concerns because the project has not been designed. We had, we've done planning work. We had a public meeting, our last big public meeting, I wrote it down here from the records we had, was 3/13/2018. So at that meeting, there was a lot of requests to deal with the lane departures, people leaving the road, the potholes in the road, the speed. So the project really is looking at the reconstruction. So ODOT will be participating in the water line, which is very rare. They're considering that a critical aspect of the project. Then the other thing will happen in design is there's also, it's design and environmental. So in that aspect, we will bring forward possible altercations to the road and we'll bring those through an ODOT prescribed public involvement. So many of you here maybe came to our South Sandusky Street meeting where we had members of ODOT, certified ODOT consultants, city staff, and we took input on the, the look and feel, where would the pedestrian walkways be, how would the intersections? We kind of went through that prescriptive process. And ODOT will be a partner to all of these contracts and that, that keeps it open and keeps it honest, it keeps it in line with all federal regulations, all the safety standards will be insured by ODOT. All the consultants have to be pre-qualified, they have to prove, take tests, prove that they meet the, the standards. So I don't know if Rob has that exact wording handy, but again, we're not asking, I don't think anyone's asking to vote on this tonight. So Rob will get the rewritten document out and that would be, we would, the administration would ask the council amend the, the proposed resolution to adopt the, the change to take away the word widening in many cases and to say that it's a road reconstruction project.
On top of that, we want to continue to address some of the, some of the narrative that's out there. Some of the considerable, or some of the topics that were brought up, a considerable amount was the amount of semi-traffic, that this, what we want to do is create some sort of through lane for truck traffic, not the case. So a big part of our comprehensive, and when we say comprehensive, we're not just looking at Edgewood Road, we're looking at, we're looking at Route 13, we are looking at a bypass, we're looking at Center Street. So Route 13, the whole idea with that is to reroute a lot of that commercial truck traffic out through there. Edgewood Road is not going to be a state route, that can only be made to be through truck, truck traffic by this body right here. And if I'm reading the room, they have no interest in doing that. So I can do it for 90 days, won't be doing that. So there is no semi-truck traffic that we plan on, on putting through there, that's, that's not a part of this plan at all. As far as general traffic concerns, need for safety is the priority of, of this entire project, aside from it being a utilities necessity, traffic is number one on our priorities list. The current ODOT number of folks that drive up through Edgewood Road every day is about 4,938, that's the provided figure. This road is not designed to handle that level of traffic, but what we have to talk about and what we have to be honest and open, everybody wants this hard truth transparency, and here it is. The idea is to make a connection between 36 and 229, but it is not the only connection. This again is that comprehensive view, a bypass, Edgewood, Center, 13. But as Brian has mentioned, this is only part of the design, only in this planning and design phase. If we look at the environmental, if we have that public input and in the design, we find that this is not the right thing for this community to do. And when I say this community, I don't just mean the Edgewood community, I mean a comprehensive traffic study that says that Mount Vernon should not do this because 6,000 or 5,000 people are coming up through this area each day. If that's not the right move for the city to do, then we won't do it. But we have to get into design to find that out. Right now, we're just kind of guessing, right? The, the rough hewn red line you see was identifying an area, it was not meant to say, well, this yard, you know, this, three feet this way, two feet this way. And I think that was the intention that some people took is, you know, we're trying to take this area for a sidewalk, that's not what we were saying. What we were saying is, this is the general area, these are the utilities in these areas that we're looking at. But if you want those detailed drawings, and people are asking for those detailed drawings, they're not there yet because they come from the design phase. We want to get to the design phase so we can have those conversations and provide those details. And once they get designed, we will provide them to you. We want that transparency because we live in this community, everybody up here lives in this community too. We're your neighbors. We want this for a better traffic pattern and we want this for a better Mount Vernon. So coming down, another big thing was sidewalks. Wherever they go, how are they going to look? How big do they need to be? How are we going to pay for them? Are there other measures that we can use to calm that traffic pattern? Yes, there are. Are we amenable to change? Absolutely. But do you know when we find that change? In the design phase. They have to vote to get us into that design phase so we can discuss this. This has been a 50-year problem. Dennis, Dennis Swingles out there, we've had this conversation. We've almost been in this conversation for 50 years now. So we know that this is an issue, the way to address it is to get into the design phase and try to find a solution. Sinage, somebody brought up, are you going to root people down Edgewood Road from the other side of town? They're coming in the south side of town? Are they going to get sent to Edgewood to go through the community? No, it's not going to be a state route. And also, we're going to have State Route 13 rerouted. So if you have commercial traffic, you're going to go up that way. We're going to, again, it's all comprehensive, right? This is all part of the plan. And now we're going to talk more about the utilities. So I'm going to kick it back to Brian to talk a little bit more about utilities.
You want to pull up the map we did? Yeah, while we're transitioning, I'll mention the Route 13. So if many of you remember, everyone here is really good at history, Mayor Starwin was sitting as councilman star, had a group of students compare driving on Edgewood versus driving on Gay Street. And it was a five-second plus or minus, it was almost the same. Once we build the Route 13 project and divert traffic, the majority of the state route traffic around the square, it'll be a, most logically, a shorter path if you are south of town to come into town, take Gay Street, and jump over on Koshokton, day and night. So that's part of this, the big plan. The other thing is Center Street, we are, we have a construction contract to take some of the transitions and smooth them out to make Center Street a more usable and to offload some of the traffic. We talked about signs. If you follow the signs that have an H on it and you're on the south of town, or in, in the areas it takes you down Center Street, if you're coming in from Gambier and you follow the hospital signs, it tells you to go to Center Street to get to the hospital. Now, there's only a few hundred cars a day that take that route because certain size cars can't go there. But we're going to improve that to help offload some of the traffic on what is also a thoroughfare. Okay, back to the, the mayor's, we have a couple, this shows the locations and the intensity, the brighter it is, the more breaks, you know, the intersection of Gambier and Edgewood has had multiple breaks, those have been both on holiday weekends. The next one, we can, got to zoom out to see the region. Yeah, this region of town was, was, has been developed for quite some time. We're seeing an extraordinary amount of, of water breaks. If you zoom down, it gives you the total, bottom left. So it's 100, this shows 119 water breaks. You're seeing some higher intensities on North Edgewood. Again, north is to the left as we're looking at this. So we're seeing a criticality of a failed water system by the AWWA standards. This problem will have to be addressed. I know we have several folks here from our utilities to talk about other stuff. So this is something that has to be fixed. We are going to have to dig the road up to put in the sanitary sewer, the water lines, the storm drains, the gas company has a project that's scheduled. So the idea is, there are some corrective actions, like adding curves and gutter, taking and reshaping the road that can be done as part of this because we're going to have to replace the water line. It is, it's in failure, it's disrupting service. So south of Oak Street Extension, there's 133 homes that rely on a single connector water line that, that has failed multiple times. So when that breaks, we have a big enough break, those 100 and, 131 about are losing water pressure, there is no loop, we have a shallow bedrock formation that has prevented the city or funding, I don't know, I didn't, we've never had a loop constructed past Oak Street. So these folks are out there relying on one pipe. The majority of the city is, you know, good design, you rely on two or more pipes. But that's, that's a situation, we do have a critical care facility there that is a, a critical user. We don't like to have our critical users on one line, but we do have the nursing facility there, so.
Another issue that came up was speed. So part of this design would be traffic calming measures in these designs to, that are reasonable to make sure that people realize that when they come up through here, they are going through a residential neighborhood and that we can slow them down naturally. We have a police department that enforces the same way that we, we would do in any other neighborhood to slow folks down. And then again, safety is paramount in this design and we are going to do that with walkability in mind for all users, that's wheelchairs, that's strollers, that's visually impaired. You know, we committed to that walkability in complete streets several years ago and we want to keep doing that, but we need to find a way to do that in the least restrictive way for property owners. So we are going to make sure that that, you know, that public communication, that public participation that is critical to this project, and we want to make sure that there are plenty of steps along the way for public involvement, public engagement. And that includes council, that includes everybody in the neighborhood, and that includes everybody in the city that utilizes these, these roads. Because again, it, this is a comprehensive view at our traffic patterns in Mount Vernon. And we have to make sure we dispel any narratives that we're trying to just cram everybody down Edgewood and that's going to be it and we're not looking at anything else. Want to make sure that, you know, we correct any incorrect statements out there like that multimodal just means trucks, multimodal means sidewalks, it means multi-use paths, it means non-vehicular modes of travel.
Why don't we give the ODOT's definition of multimodal?
Any non-vehicular modes of transportation through the project.
That does not include trucks.
And that's, those are the definitions that we are using when we are talking about, you know, this project in the scope of working with ODOT. And when we are talking about working with their grants and working with them as a partner in this big project that is needed to happen, it's a generational project now. We're committing to seeing it through, but we need your help in making it a project that we can all be proud of and make sure that, you know, it serves its purpose best for Mount Vernon as a whole. So we want to make sure that everybody is aware that we're working to make sure that your voices are heard and specifically on this piece of legislation, it is not, you know, pass it and then, you know, we're going to work. This is a request to go into design so we can answer some of these questions and incorporate the public involvement into the decision. So with the negative one minute remaining, do you have any questions?
No. So just in conclusion, I, I do want to thank the public again for being here at the March 6 meeting, and I, many of you here tonight were at that meeting, and that does matter. We've also received several emails along this line. So comments are still welcome, we want you to know that. Also want to thank our administration for taking the time today. We actually met two and a half hours, I had to eat my lunch during the time and, but it was good to discuss this and be real thorough because we want to be transparent. So I just want to make, thank the administration as well. So just wanted to make sure, council, that you're aware that we're really just looking at design in this resolution. Okay? Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. The final committee meeting tonight is to discuss, we have several piece ordinances for adding personnel, my committee. You know, we've, we've had a lot going on lately, and I knew there were some questions about some of these positions, and I'll be quite frankly, we haven't had time to have those conversations. I know one of the questions I got, maybe we can get that one answered tonight, we'll probably take these to a second reading tonight and give us time to discuss, but Brian, can you help me with this one? On the one for ordinance 2409, so it's taking four engineering techs to five and not more than 16 public works technicians, and I'm trying to remember off the top of my head back to our budget meeting, what those specific positions are that we're adding?
Two streets, two parks.
Yeah, so, so for my department, the, you know, we, we are doing more work with the geographic information systems. The EPA mandates us to inventory all the storm drains and keep maps of those. They're also mandatory aspects of us to go open every water meter and make sure folks don't have lead lines or failing galvanized pipes. So that's where we're looking at a technician to be sort of a partner with the utility to work on these mandatory EPA requirements.
So we have the GIS technician two with that budget. One of those is that?
Yeah, one of those would be.
That's the engineering.
And the engineer. Now, the other ones I will defer to.
Ms. Councilwoman Woods, can I invite Mr. Scott up for a second?
Please, please, yes.
So if you will remember correctly, in several of our conversations, we talked about adding four public works technicians, one in streets, one in public buildings and lands, and two in parks. It's important that we remember that several of these are dedicated funds and some are funded 50-50, and there's, there's a little bit of a fun way that Terry is, is compensated for knowing how to do this. So the streets position, Terry, if you want to enlighten us on how that one will be funded first.
On the streets, that position, we have, streets will cover that position in that regards. If you'll stay with the previous conversation with Mr. Ball, with that one, council, we decided to do a 50-50 split. We're going to do 50% in the general, we're going to do the other 50 in our stormwater operations. This, this person is, as Mr. Ball and Mr. Sayers have indicated, that the needs are there both ways, but for the dollar, trying to make it, stretch it as far as we can, we'd like to see that this comes out as a 50-50 split on the cost analysis. And that was, if you, if you followed in your meetings that you, we've had the appropriations meetings, that's what we were looking for. And I think that's a good fit for this particular aspect in this regards, so.
And then another one of these texts was public buildings and lands, which we decided would come from, partially from cemetery, is that correct?
Yes, yes. On the cemetery side, that was the, the other fill-in on that aspect as well. Our cemetery operations is doing fairly well in regards. So I think it has the abilities to, to take on the support, and it certainly would give another extra pair of hands that Mr. Hinkle could use with his departments. This is one of the makeups I like about this diversification is, is that while you kind of normally fit into a department, we can very easily take a pair of hands and move somebody else that needs some additional help in that regard. And it doesn't cost us another person to do that, you've got people pairing together. And that works out, I think, very, very well for us, so.
And then finally, there were two parks technicians that were totally funded from the general fund.
From the gen, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And that, that, yeah, you guys had a nice conversation, your meetings on that, I appreciate what you did with that, Mr. Miller, that did a nice job as well. But that was lacking very, very difficult operations, and so.
And I would put a little bit of emphasis on this, this, these departments have approached about going to four tins over the summer to maximize the sunlight. As a department leader, their, well, as their, their supervisor supervisor, I would love to grant them that opportunity, but the way that they are currently staffed now, we cannot do that.
Correct.
If we move forward with this as soon as possible, we can do that. They have to be staffed up in order for me to grant that request. And I think that's efficient for them to maximize, again, you know, they're working outside, especially with PBNL, with the parks, they're working, and the streets are working outside, they're maximizing that sunlight, that's good. They would revert back in the fall since they don't have that opportunity. So what I can't do is, right now, we have three in the parks, I can't give them the opportunity to have one person on a Friday or one person on a Monday, especially with the busy, you know, a busy park season. So if I can fully staff that, that would be, that would be great, so.
Okay.
So I actually have some concerns about pushing this off further specifically for those positions. I know that people who have applied will look at other places for jobs, and the assistant fire chief is another one where I think we have the potential to lose quality candidates by waiting on this. I think that we discussed thoroughly, and as somebody who kicked and screamed as we went through the process, I am very much in support of getting these passed because I think that it's important now that we have, as a council, determined our budget, that we move forward with what we have already funded. That's just my.
Okay, so let me, let me get a feel here then, because I, that was the one question I remember from whoever asked. So if, if that helps answer that question on that piece of legislation, let's go through these really quickly. So there's the wastewater superintendent, I wasn't sure if anybody had any questions on that one?
That's housekeeping, that's just a name change.
Okay, then we, we just got the questions answered on 09. So 10 was the human resource generalist, any other questions on that one, or we can take it to a vote tonight? Okay? And is that all of them?
Assistant chief.
There you go. Okay. Any other?
Could I add? I think there was legislation for replacing people that are in the auditor's office.
Yes.
Is that a possibility under your consideration?
Absolutely. I just want to make sure everybody's questions are answered first.
My concern is Terry and the financial stability, I'm sure he can use help to keep track of stuff.
We've had a lot of other plates spinning in the air lately, I just didn't want to rush this. So if you're telling me you've got your questions answered to this point?
The auditor, auditor positions are critical.
And I do want to stress for your, all of your sake and for the public's sake, just because we passed this tonight, this is, especially with civil service, this is a process. It's not, we, you know, pass it tonight, somebody starts work tomorrow. There is an extensive civil service process, we have to go through testing, we have to hire, we have to onboard. So just because we pass it tonight, you know, I'm hoping we get people in within the next month, month and a half.
And we have had exhaustive discussion.
Yes, yes, also that, yeah.
He's using the word exhausted there.
Keep using that word.
An accurate description.
Are you exhausted?
Yes, discussing his position, yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Everybody's got their questions answered. Okay, then I will close that committee meeting and we will adjourn and come back into session at 7:30.
Look at that.
Okay, it's 7:30, so we will call to order the March 11th legislative session of city council. I will say we are at capacity. I think we can fit one more person. So if anybody else shows up that puts us over capacity, we'll have to move some people down to the basement. Any overflow down there? We do have a TV, so you can be to the left.
We don't have that set up.
Oh, we don't have it set up?
We don't have it set up.
Yeah, the internet went out.
Okay.
Yeah, we had crashes today.
All right, Mr. Hill, will you call roll?
Ms. Keener.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Seville.
Here.
Mr. Severance.
Here.
Mr. Mahan.
Here.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
We are in session. Tonight we have Marvin, is it hot? To give our invocation, I'll ask you all rise for the invocation and then remain standing for the pledge.
I apologize that I won't be able to stay for the meeting, so that leaves you another chair. My grandson is playing volleyball at the junior high school. Thank you for your support of our schools. Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for the evening in which you have gathered us together here. We pray for the mayor and the city council as they make decisions that affect our city and our county. We ask that you would bless them with wisdom and understanding and knowledge. And we pray for them as we live here and work here and play here, that we would be able to live peacefully and without fear in our communities. And we thank you for the support of our leaders here that help us to do that. We ask your blessings upon the citizenry as they are here this evening, as we have the privilege and the opportunity to speak before our leaders that serve us and they hear our voices. Father, bless this night. Bless the city of Mount Vernon. Bless the county of Knox County. And most of all, God bless. county of Knox County. And most of all, God bless each and every one that is gathered here this evening. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Council, in your packets are the minutes of the legislative session of February 26th and the special meeting from March 6th. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hill, I see we have no petitions or communications. Is that correct?
Several emails have been sent to us to be entered into the record, but not to be read out loud.
Okay, thank you. In the council packets are also the committee reports from the February 26th. I guess they're both my Employee and Community Relations Committee meetings. We do have one liquor control license tonight. This is for a transfer of a license from, I'm going to mess this up, of Phillies Incorporated on Koshockton Avenue to another address on Koshockton Avenue, 1421 to 939. If you have any comments or questions, you can contact Mr. Hill about that transfer. I see no proclamations. We do have several people wanting to speak on city concerns, so I've broken these into two piles, one on solar panels and one on Upper Gilcrest. So we have a four-minute limit. This is going to take a while. So I will ask this. If you can attempt to keep it under four minutes, that would be great. If you find that somebody has said something before and you want to kind of shorten your presentation a little bit, that will assist because this is going to take a bit. I'm going to start these in the order they were received, and we're going to start with the solar. So I have Craig Adair from Open Road Renewables. If you will, please state your name and address for us.
Absolutely. And I brought a few handouts. Can I just hand them here and let them go around?
Is this what we had on our desk?
No.
Okay.
So there's the folder on top, which is similar to the letters, that are each elastic and updated set. And then below that, there's one set of copies for each person. Thank you, council members. My name is Craig Adair, and I am a vice president of development at Open Road Renewables. Although I'm starting to think my boss tricked me and my real job is actually increasing attendance at public meetings. So that seems to be my role these days. But thank you very much for having me. Let me have a few minutes. I'll try to keep it to four minutes. It might get a little bit more if it's possible, but I'm sure I can keep it below eight. Open Road Renewables, we are the developer of the Fraser Solar Project, the proposed 120-megawatt project, mostly in Miller and Clinton townships. One parcel, as you know, would be located in the city of Mount Vernon. So, and I apologize, this is the first time we're meeting. We've had several meetings with city staff over the last year and a half, going back, I think, to July of 2022. So normally in this setting, I would do an overview of the project. There's not time to do that. But in the email that I sent you last week, there was an overview, and that's one of the documents here is a separate overview. So rather than go through that, I'll let you just ask me questions if you would like about any of those. The folder on top is just letters. The packet is the three documents underneath each of that. So instead of doing an overview, what I'd like to do is, unfortunately, right now, there's a lot of misinformation about solar. And I'm happy to answer questions, but I thought I would just mention a few things, set the record straight on a few of the claims that were made at your last meeting a couple of weeks ago. And then I'll open it up to questions. So like I said, this project is a proposed 120-megawatt project. At the meeting a couple of weeks ago, one of the speakers mentioned something that we hear a lot, which is that solar panels are dangerous, that they contain toxic materials, and that they could contaminate the soil and underground water supplies. That is just not true. That's fear mongering. It's not fact. And one of the documents that I've included in your packet is a document by the Ohio Department of Health that did a review of all the literature on this and several other topics related to solar projects. And I think it's on pages four and five of the Ohio Department of Health document, where they summarize the findings that solar projects do not pose a threat to public health or the environment. So that's one thing that came up. Another claim that was made a couple of weeks ago is that solar projects cause widespread flooding. This is something that we also hear. And in fact, the group that one of the speakers was with has made some claims about a project that my company developed down in Brown County, Ohio, called the Gilcrest Solar Project, where there were claims made of catastrophic flooding. And I would encourage each one of you, if you haven't, to go see one of these projects. You can go see that one. It's one that we developed. My company no longer owns it. You can talk to the landowners. You can talk to soil and water, the staff there, who I think will confirm. That area in particular was wet and prone to flooding prior to the solar project. But the information we have from the soil and water is it hasn't caused a significant change in drainage patterns as a result of being constructed. We have completed a preliminary stormwater assessment for the Fraser Solar Project. It's part of the application that is public. It's on the OPSB docket. It's a very long application, so prepare yourself if you want to dig into it. But we sent a copy of it last fall to the city engineer, so happy to get together with him, and we can have the consultant, the civil engineering firm that did that. The reason why solar projects don't cause flooding is because the area that's inside the fence is completely vegetated. So when you switch from crops to year-round grass cover, in this case, deep-rooted native vegetation, which serves two functions. Number one, to increase saturation in the ground to prevent erosion and stormwater runoff. And number two, to provide forage for sheep. I think you may hear the company that's going to be doing the vegetation management, that has the local sheep farmer, can tell you more about that. But the area inside the fence is mostly open. If you were to look at a bird's eye view, roughly two-thirds of the area is grass. It's not covered by solar panels. And so what we see and what that stormwater assessment shows is that stormwater runoff generally goes down once the vegetative cover has been established.
So that's been four minutes. If you can kind of summarize and finish.
Yeah, I'm going to do one more, and then one point, and then I'll wrap up. Thank you. Another claim that was made is that, once a solar project is decommissioned, that the land will not be farmable again. That's fear mongering. It's not fact. I would encourage you to talk to landowners that have participated in projects. That claim was made, again, about the project of ours down in Brown County. You can talk to the farmers there. They claimed that topsoil was trucked off of the site. That's not true. Today's project, OPSB, has very strict requirements for how topsoil is handled. Topsoil cannot be removed from site. This project, topsoil must be segregated for any areas where it's going to be scraped, for example, for an access road. And we will have to do soil testing prior to construction, determine baseline conditions, and then several years prior to decommissioning, another round of soil testing, and then after decommissioning, to make sure that the soil is back up to agricultural production levels. So those are just three things. The last thing I'll say, I appreciate the extra time, is something that I mentioned to staff in our last meeting in January. The parcel that is inside the city limits is unique. Most of the land, in fact, in this project, all of the other properties that are part of the project, the farmers prefer to lease us the land. So when the project is decommissioned, we won't own the land. It will be up to the landowner what happens to that land once the solar project ends and is decommissioned. This parcel, the roughly 100-acre parcel that's inside the city limits, in that case, he's going to sell us the land. And so we have say over what happens to that at the end of the solar project. And what I mentioned to staff is that we would be happy to work with the city, knowing that in this resolution, you talk about the importance of agricultural priorities. That parcel is actually zoned P and D, so probably most likely it would be developed for housing. But if agriculture is important to the city, we would be happy to work with you and put a permanent conservation easement on it. So we can visit more about that, but that's something we would be happy to work with you on.
Okay. We're going to have to move on, because we've got a bunch of people that want to talk.
So we're asking?
Yeah.
No.
No.
No, no questions?
No. Thank you. I think we're good. Thanks. Next, I have Drenda Kisi.
Hi, thank you for hearing me tonight. I live right in the project. We have a 17-acre wetland. And just like yourselves, we discovered it after the fact.
Can you give us your address?
Yes, I'm 6040 Sharp Road, Mount Vernon, Ohio. And we have a 17-acre wetland. We woke up one day to our neighbor telling us we're going to have solar panels surrounding our property, touching us on all four sides, across the street, behind us, around us. We said, there's no way. That can't happen. That can't happen in America. That can't happen in Knox County, where you don't know anything's going to change on your property. And so I've been speaking to neighbors. I've been speaking to people for two years, working with PCKO, Preserve Knox County, I'm sorry, PKCO, Preserve Knox County, Ohio. And we've been at meeting after meeting with trustees. And we would see 80 people there. We'd say, who in this room supports solar panels? Craig Adair was the only person that would raise his hand. And yet, we've been told 50% of the community is for this. None of us have seen that. I've been canvassing. I have five or 600 signatures just from this week of people saying, do not want this here. Everyone I talked to, speaking with them, restaurants, everywhere, they said, we don't want this in our county. We don't know how this happened. Where did this come from? So just as you share concerns, I know you found out after the fact. We did too. And so it's a harsh thing to wake up and find that your whole county can change, your whole family, everything. You've lived 28 years. You've built your property values. I've studied the leaching. I've looked at other situations and have found that, everything I've read in California, LA Times this past week, had an article about how are we going to dispose of these aging 15 to 20-year solar panels? And they have cadmium and trillium in them. There is high amounts of micro cracks in them, soldering problems with them. And our friend Gary Kessler can speak to that much better as an engineer. But I just want to say, as a Knox County resident, and as someone who's been here 28 years, spoken with people all around us, people do not want this. And I don't even know where an environmental study would have been done, because we certainly didn't see one done. And we have a 17-acre wetland. We have sandhill cranes flying in and out. They're nesting, starting their nest now. I'm thinking, how is this possibly green? How is it possibly going to study for this? And anyone that says 50%, that's the other thing. When we were at the Memorial Theater two years ago, May 24th, 2022, people didn't even know what we were getting into. We got up to just spontaneously give our testimony and say, hey, we don't want this here. Craig came with his people, all prepared. If you look at the minutes and the notes, the people that took notes, it was like a plan. They only put neutral kind of sounding statements on all of our pieces. I went through it. I went, wait a minute. My husband got up. He was adamantly against it. But yet, the documents and the record doesn't sound at all like he was against it. So someone already knew there was plans. They were playing us. And to us, it looked like it was already a well-laid-out situation. The ones that got up and said, I'm for solar, it clearly says in the record they're for solar. So if you look at it, you'd go, this isn't what happened in the meeting. People were standing up, you know, cheering on the anti-solar. If you were in that crowd, you'd go, everyone here, with the exception of Craig and a few of his folks, are against solar. And then to find out that our neighbors were paid $15,000, $10,000 hush money. When you have to be quiet about something, something's wrong about it. When I have to pay someone to be quiet and turn neighbors against each other, something is wrong. When I have to have several names for my company, I'm Fraser Solar, I'm Open Road Renewables, I'm all about kids and youth, and they put the signs in there and get college kids to go out and knock doors. And my mother had a yes, solar sign stuck in her yard that she didn't put in her yard next to my campaign sign. That didn't go well with my mother. Anyway, so just, I just want to make sure the council, I appreciate so much that you're doing this. It means a lot to all of us that you're standing up, because we don't feel like our voices have been heard. We sort of feel like we were played in that meeting. It felt like we were played. I looked at the public record, and I'm saying, I'm remembering that meeting, going, people were cheering. You know, when anyone said anything against solar, I know I got up and said something. I said to our council members, how did this happen? We put you in office to protect us, and if you don't protect us, we'll vote you out. I had no idea I would be doing anything like I'm doing right now, but it just...
And I apologize. That's four minutes.
Anyway, just to know, these are people, just in a week, that say, don't want solar here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, next we have Jerry Kelly. And again, if you'll state your name and address for us.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jerry Kelly. I live at 402 Chase Avenue in Gambier. I would like to speak in favor of the solar project. Photovoltaics are now the most economical choice for large-scale energy production. In our free market, solar is where energy investments are going. If solar is able to scale up in the next 20 to 30 years, it could be producing almost half of our electricity nationwide, with the other half, of course, continuing to be produced by traditional sources, fossil fuels. In my opinion, that represents progress, not just because of environmental concerns, but because I feel energy security is an issue that is not receiving enough attention in this conversation. Our modern way of life is incredibly dependent upon electricity. Our means of generating and distributing that energy are in need of major upgrades. We've all experienced relatively short grid blackouts, so we understand how life as we know it can grind to a halt in the absence of constant flow of electricity. With computers and the internet, we have put virtually our entire economy online in one form or another. And so this flow of electricity is vital to each and every one of us and to our way of life. The more we diversify and distribute our energy production, generating energy as close as possible to where it is needed, the more our power will be secure. Solar is one piece of that puzzle, not the only piece, but it's one piece. And it's a piece that represents progress away from dirtier sources of electricity production. Solar works very well in Ohio, despite some people's claims. I have solar at home. I've had it for a number of years. It works very well in this environment. And unlike other forms of development that may be coming our way, such as housing and shopping centers, solar can be installed and removed without changing the essential rural character of what surrounds it. It can coexist with agriculture and provide financial security to offset some of the natural risks that are inherent in family farming, and it can keep those farms in the family. I ask the city of Mount Vernon to support the development of the Fraser Project and to encourage the installation of rooftop, brown field, and parking lot solar systems to advance our progress toward a more secure and cleaner energy backbone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Katie Carruthers. Did I say that right?
Yeah. Hello, I'm Katie Carruthers. I live at 7510 Granville Road. My husband and I have been raising sheep here in Knox County for 10 years, and we are looking forward to the opportunity that Fraser Solar will provide for our business and the greater sheep industry here in America. For several years now, we've been selling our really hardy pasture-tested breeding stock into utility-scale solar projects in states such as Tennessee, Georgia, Virginia. If anyone here raises livestock, knows that those are pretty harsh climates for sheep. And ours sheep have been doing very well for several years now in those more harsh environments than what we have here in Ohio. Solar grazing is a proven agricultural model. It's being done in Texas. It's being done in New York. It's being done here in Ohio. My husband will talk more on that later. So our sheep will maintain the year-round vegetation cover that will serve to protect our valuable soils here in Knox County. I'm sure you guys have driven past my house many times. I have those big greenhouses and ran a cut flower farm for many years, selling into florist industry in Columbus and did wedding flowers in order to build our sheep enterprise. And now that we're there, I'm doing, I'm a full-time shepherdess. So I know how valuable our soils are here and how well they work. And we will also be producing a very valuable agricultural product underneath these solar panels. So currently, the United States imports 60% to 70% of the lamb consumed. There's a large gap in the market there. A younger generation of farmers and shepherds can fill that gap, if given the farmland access that large-scale solar will provide. Land access is one of the toughest things that new farmers like us face. So please support this project and help provide Knox County with more jobs and livestock production. You know, I heard some of my neighbors talking about how, you know, this is a narrative about a little family farm and... about a little family farm and a storybook, and I can assure you that my work, we work hard, and this is going to be a large agricultural business. It's going to support beside our own employees and our 3,000 use that we will probably have on this site. We'll be supporting local equipment dealers, we'll be supporting forage seed suppliers to plant the grass and forages that our sheep will be eating. Veterinarians, and not because there's any harm to the sheep with the solar panels, but because if we have any livestock producers in here, now we have to have a veterinary client patient relationship in order to get many drugs that we used to have access to. So we work very closely with veterinarians to ensure that our animals are healthy. And more, you know, this is a business that's going to go beyond just us and our, our small family farm, and we're hoping to bring a, a new kind of agricultural business to Knox County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brad Carruthers.
Hello, my name is Brad Carruthers. I live at 7510 Granville Road. I'm the Director of Operations in New Slate Land Management. I'm also a trustee on the Board of Trustees of the Ohio Sheep Improvement Association. So I wanted here to talk about solar grazing, like to kind of build on some of Katie's points. You know, it is a agricultural model. It is done on very large scale throughout the United States. It's nothing new. There's a lot of misconceptions about, you know, some health effects for the sheep. The sheep are healthy. We actually maintain a solar facility right now up at Oberlin College. Our sheep spend the summers up there. They do a very good job maintaining the vegetation. They're managing in a way that the vegetation is managed properly. It's also managed properly for the, from a sheep aspect, for the sheep health and the sheep productivity. Ohio historically is a very large sheep producing state in the United States. Currently, Ohio has a lot of sheep flocks, but they're very small. And one of the issues is land access. And especially for new and emerging farmers, it's one of the hardest ways for us to grow. You know, this, we're a first generation business, so we don't have access to generations of land. And so this is a way that we can move forward and that we can progress both producing energy and producing a high quality land product. So I hope you guys will support this. It's a valuable project, and it's going to bring a lot of growth opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ron Cameron.
I'm Ron Cameron. I live at 7419 Sharp Road, and I've lived there almost 46 years. Matter of fact, Mr. and Mrs. Carruthers are grazing my fields. I love farmland, I'll tell you that right up front. And many of you know who I am and know where I live, I love farmland. But across the street from us, across the road from us, are 100 acres that the city, it's in the city, and Mark Ramser owns those, and it's scheduled for planned neighborhood development housing. Well, when this came along, I would rather have solar panels. It's going to change the complexion of our road, there's going to be a need for at least another lane, maybe two. And the noise, the families, I'm not against families, I had three kids. I just would rather have solar panels. That's, that's where I stand on it. I read a paper a week or two ago that there would be millions of solar panels in Miller Township and Clinton Township. That's not true. I immediately contacted Craig Adair. He said there would be about 250,000 solar panels on the 840 acres. And it was also reported it was going to be 1,300 acres. It's 840 acres, and there's not going to be millions of solar panels. Another thing I like about the plan that Open Roads has, it's not going to have solar panels right out to the edge of the road. They have to be set back 150 feet. So, you know, you're not going to feel like you're going down a hallway of solar panels if it's on both sides of the road. So I support the Fraser Solar Plan for the reasons I stated. Okay?
Thank you. David Godwin.
My name's David Godwin, and I've lived on Sharp Road, 7093 Sharp Road, for the last 35 years. Solar projects are going to be right across the street from me. So when I sit on my front porch, I'm going to be looking out here at this. The Fraser products are, been very good to me, telling me exactly how they're going to do everything. They're going to come down our road. If you've ever been down Sharp Road, you should all travel down there. It's farm country. They're going to clean up all the brush and debris along the road. They're going to landscape it and put nice new, small growing trees and shrubs there. And then there's going to put up a fence about six to eight feet around this thing to keep any problems out of there. And when it's, one thing I like about this, solar panels are quiet. Plus, they don't put off any kind of a toxic air or anything like that. It's going to be clean energy, and they're going to produce a lot of electricity for everybody in this community. All the electricity they bake goes into the grid, and it's going to be used for all of you. So when you turn on your lights in the morning to go to the bathroom and use big stuff for the kitchen, you're going to have electricity. And I, I just think it's going to be a good project. I think Fraser Products are, they have been very upfront with us, telling exactly how they're going to do everything. Craig has pictures, he's put up with a lot of meetings to show us exactly what it's going to look like five years from now, 10 years from now. And a lot of people think it's going to do away with our farm ground. Well, that's not true. If something happens to these solar projects and they're no good, they can't be used anymore for some reason, they have set aside a lot of money to just take down all these products and turn it right back to the original land it was. So I'm hoping that all of you give us some serious consideration, because I think it's a win-win for our community. They're bringing in thousands and thousands of dollars to give to this community for schools. They're going to help the township out with roads. They're going to do everything they can to help this project work. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you, can I ask a question? No questions.
No questions.
Sorry. Jackie Mann.
Jackie Mann. I'm hesitant to give my address, because Mr. Adair is sitting back there writing down people's names. And I don't know, I don't have a problem in giving you my address.
We actually have your address on here, so we'll use that for our record.
Thank you. Okay. I'm a new resident here in Mount Vernon, but my family, generations and generations of family have been in this area. So it's near and dear to my heart, even though I wasn't raised here. And as a self-appointed environmentalist and naturalist, first, I think it's important that we start by reminding ourselves that none of this is our land we are talking about here. It's God's land that has been bequeathed to us to be used with good stewardship utmost, and all of our minds should be this. In my view, this proposal to this area of bringing solar farms is in direct violation of the stewardship. And I say this as somebody who has a small solar power generator. It's not like I'm totally against solar power, I'm not for industrial solar. There are many reasons I hold this view, but not the least among them is the disruption in the habitat. You can say all you want about the sheep and all of that, but it disrupts the land, the natural beauty of the land around us. I don't know if any of you have ever been in other areas of Ohio, like down 23 going south of Columbus, and all of the solar farms down there. If you haven't, I recommend you look at them. They're ugly. They destroy the beauty of the land. There are many applications for solar. It doesn't have to be on farmland. And I believe there is an unresolved problem with removal and waste when they, when they reach their lifespan. For years, our country has sent our used computer terminals and used electronics to third world countries to destroy their land and their landfills. My question is, will these panels end up in our landfills or in third world countries destroying those countries again? Recently, I was online. And according to the International Renewable Energy Agency, which is cited on an online article at Harvard Business Review, large amounts of annual waste are anticipated by the early 2030s and could total 78 million tons of panels by 2050. 78 million tons of panels. And that if they are kept in place for, this is all assuming they're all kept in place for their purported 30 year lifespan. But if they're not kept in place those 30 years, that means even more are to be disposed of before then, because they're getting rid of them even sooner than the 30 years and bringing on more updated panels. The cost to recycle is said to be around $20 to $30 a panel, but dumping at landfill costs are a dollar to $2. So if you look at economics, are they going to end up in our landfills? Where are they going, what are, this is a crucial question regarding industrial solar.
You're at your four minutes. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jared Yost.
Hi there, Jared Yost, 14701 Sycamore Road. I'd like to add some points to some things that were said earlier, specifically regarding some things that Mr. Adair said. First off, regarding flooding, once again, you can go visit many of these places yourself and speak to the residents and hear about the flooding, as well as, as I mentioned before, look up some of the lawsuits that are existing currently due to flooding in some of these areas. If there wasn't a flooding issue, you would not also see other states classifying solar panels as an impervious surface. There's a reason they're being classified as an impervious surface, and that's because they create concentrated runoff. Regardless of what's underneath them, the water's being concentrated in one place. They do contain hazardous materials. If you read the thing, especially from like the Ohio EPA and whatnot, they continually use the word normal. So when these are in normal operating condition, when they're, you know, operating normally or whatever, yes, they're fine. They are absolutely safe, just like your computer or anything else. It's when things are exposed to water is when you start to get leaching. I live, obviously, where I am on Sycamore Road, I live south of town, and I believe preserving farmland should, should definitely be one of our highest priorities. But I'm not naive to think that every farm's going to stick around forever, right? I mean, things are going to have to change. So I think about what's going to be important to the city of Mount Vernon when it comes to change. It's going to be growth. As I asked you guys last meeting I was at, if you could predict what you think Mount Vernon would look like 30 to 40 years now, or what direction it would grow? And I don't think any of us can, right? But with the growth of Columbus and Intel coming in, I think we would all agree, we're going to have to have some growth south. So does it make sense to have the city partially locked by solar panels? I understand and understand the concern for the residents that live near this acreage that is proposed, that's within city limits, not wanting to be housing. But on the same token, unless you've been living on a rock, we have a housing crisis, right? We don't have enough homes to begin with, so where are we going to put these homes? And does it make more sense for that land to be used for solar panels? Or does it make more sense for that land to be used for homes? I also would like to give you something to think about for different types of growth. If we look back to when Honda first built its plant in Marysville, it had to have a lot of other plants support it, right? You can look at many cities around and see that they all have factories supporting Honda. You can only imagine that Intel's going to be very similar. If any of that land were to eventually be zoned industrial manufacturing and could house a factory, how much better would that be for the community versus solar panels? How many jobs would that create? How much more spending would that bring to the city? And how many, how much more taxes would that bring to the city versus just the solar panels? And I hope you all have seen the pilot payment plan for the city. You get $2,877 per year. $114,594 over 40 years. That's all you get out of the pilot program. Now, the county gets $286,000 per year, or 11.3 million over the 40 years. I'd say it would be easy to, easy to assume you're going to get a lot more tax money out of a manufacturing facility, homes, anything like that versus the pilot program. So I am strongly against the solar project and support your resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ben Dean.
Good evening. My name is Ben Dean, I live at 6041 Sharp Road, Mount Vernon, Ohio. It's very interesting hearing some of my Sharp Road neighbors talk tonight. Now, what you probably didn't pick up on is there's a geographical divide on Sharp Road. That divide is basically represented by where the pavement ends, where Clinton Township stops and Miller Township begins. If you go drive down that road, you will notice on the north section of the road, a lot of yes solar signs for some very specific reasons which were elucidated tonight. As soon as you hit the pave, and then into the pavement on the southern edge of Sharp Road onward down, you're not going to see a resident with a yes solar sign down that way, right? There, there's a divide there. And it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that there is such a divide between, between neighbors. And part of that divide was well articulated by Ron Cameron tonight, right? Which is exactly their concern is about residential development. But Jared also pointed out, right, that is a significant concern for a lot of us. How do we balance appropriately the need to preserve farmland, but also to support the things that the city needs? Well, I think Jared did a great job highlighting this, someone's been a long time on it, is the contrast here, right, between the city's need for housing potentially and the city's need for solar energy. Let's be clear about where the energy goes. Nobody knows. That's the truth. Because the, the grid works like this, energy gets fed in, it's all one gigantic pool. Nobody really gets to choose where the energy that they pull comes from, it's just all in the grid. But companies and municipalities can buy the energy from a particular facility if they so choose. Well, what happens many times in this, in these cases is that somebody, either it's a very large municipality or like Cincinnati, or, or a very rich company like Amazon, will choose to buy the energy that is produced by a solar energy facility or something like that, and they will reap the green benefits from that, right? They will be able to polish their image as being a green company, right? So this idea that the energy stays here in Knox County is a little bit off the facts, right? And the other point I would make about that is, in terms of this, this energy, the reason they want to build here is because there's room on our grid already. There is capacity on our grid to, for more energy to be added to it. That alone should point to the fact that it's very unlikely that energy's going to stay here, as much as anybody can say of where the energy actually stays, right? Because this is, this is the nebulous concept behind the way the grid works. The only other thing I want to say here is just to echo the words that someone was sharing earlier about talking about stewardship. Stewardship is such a critically important word, right? And it's why you guys have been appointed, I would even say chosen by the public and by God, to be in the role, to be good and effective stewards of this community. And so it's not an easy job or easy task that has been put on your laps, but I'm calling on you to do your due diligence, make a good decision tonight, on to choose to steward not just farmland, right? But the opportunity for growth, the opportunity for housing that this community needs. These things, I am a farmland person, just like many people in this room, but I also recognize the need for balance, and that's where stewardship comes in. So I encourage you guys and just to do your best tonight to make a good stewardship based decision. decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe this is James Stallard. If I mispronounced, I apologize. No? Is it Stallard? Okay. I apologize.
No.
Not about solar.
No, 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 we're, we're to the next pile, where now we're talking about Edgewood. We're off to a great start. We're off to a great start.
I was confused.
I did.
Always wanted to be first in the next pile.
You win.
I was very pleased to hear that our concerns from March the 6th have been incorporated. But I'm still concerned that Resolution 2024-23 is about extending Edgewood Road to Coshockton Road. So I've already handed out to you some information about how we believe that's going to affect our neighborhood in an obvious financial way. Now, the parcels of budding Edgewood Road, north of Gambier Road, are listed in the table that I gave you, with the west side on the left and the east side on the right side of the table. The Form for Parcel Numbers for Properties in the City is 66 dash, and then five, five spaces and then three more spaces. The Form for Parcel Numbers for Properties in Pleasant Township, and there are some of those, is similar, it's 59 dash, five zeros, three zeros. The valuations are from the Knox County Auditor's website's access today. They reflect the triennial updating of values done last year. Blank spaces in the table indicate the absence of a corresponding taxable property on the east or on the west side of the road. One vacant parcel in Pleasant Township, and the business on the southwestern corner of Gambier Road and Edgewood Road are not included here. The total auditor's valuation of the properties is $8,482,943. Extending Edgewood Road to Coshockton Avenue is estimated to decrease the retail sales value of the listed properties by 30 to 35 percent. That's already been presented here. That is, respectively, from the auditor's valuation, a reduction of two and a half to nearly three and a half million dollars. The grant funds referenced in Resolution 2024-23 are tax money. The decrease in value by implementing 2024-23 is money stripped from taxpayers without passing it through the tax system. Nevertheless, it represents real money, potentially lost by property owners. In the end, if this resolution is adopted, residents pay in taxes and in loss. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Yes.
We've moved on from solar, you might want to take a very short recess. Some people, I don't know, maybe everyone wants to stay, but maybe some folks, if the solar conversation's passed, they might want to, do you entertain that?
Well, I think he's asking if anybody wants to leave after the solar.
Okay. I think they're here.
Okay, never mind.
Next, we have Jennifer Showman.
So I'm Jennifer Showman, I live at 200 North Edgewood Road. I kind of want to start to apologize in advance because I came prepared with one thing, and then I learned more tonight, so I'm pivoting. It's not as well-prepared. So I'm going to start with Resolution 2024-23. As you can see up there, states a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation and improvement of Edgewood Road and declaring it an emergency. I don't really see anywhere in that statement where it says entering into a contract for designing the rehabilitation and improvement of Edgewood. If design was what the resolution is asking the council to vote upon, where is that stated? It seems like it's a key word missing in that document. Today, Mr. Ball spoke and stated that they wanted to make amendments to this document with like verbiage in the project description, including like the widening of Edgewood. Seems like we might want to edit that first part and include design in there, if that's what we're really voting on, just for clarification. Also, if this resolution is amended, with things like that, when will the public and council see these, the amended document? And if the resolution is revised, does that extend the period that, before you guys vote on it? Does it give people more time to look at the document, that type of thing? And then, if we're going to revise that, can we also include ODOT's definition of the word multimodal? Because if I just Google that, that's, it's very different, in my opinion. Sorry, got to switch documents. So another thing is, that was brought up a lot on the 6th, that was not really brought up by the council today, is the inclusion of making this an emergency. It really wasn't addressed, but I asked that if this is revised, can we remove it as an emergency? It doesn't seem like this is an emergency. I know from looking at the agenda, most things are apparently considered an emergency, but given the public opposition, we would like the ability to basically have a voice in this, and by calling it an emergency, we can't put it on the ballot, and we feel like that is something we should be able to do if it's passed. I also wanted to ask the question of if you have a traffic study? Is that going to take into consideration the population increase that you're proposing with all the new housing developments? Looking at Upper Gilcrest Road and Black Jack Road, are you, you have numbers for how many people are going to live in those developments? Are you going to take into consideration those numbers, even though you're not going to get those if you do a traffic study on Edgewood in the next year, for example? And then, if you remake the roads, allowing them to handle heavy traffic, what's to prevent them from being used as a truck route? To cut between 229 and Coshockton, or from High Street to either state route? I mean, I know you said signage to that effect, but most people use GPS. What's going to prevent the GPS from directing truck traffic, especially if suddenly the roads are made for that? That is all I have, so I thank you for your time and the ability to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Dennis Swingle.
Dennis Swingle, 1101 East Chestnut in Mount Vernon. And I first want to thank Mr. Sayers for the glimpse we got tonight, but we need more of a glimpse than that. So I'm asking, and of course, I've got some added things that I really didn't intend to talk about until I got the first 15 minutes out of the way. As all the questions that we've asked, and you shed some light on a few items tonight, I ask, when can we have another public meeting for the residents of Edgewood Road? Not a city council meeting, but a special meeting, so that we can get more of those questions answered? That's number one. But number two, I can't thank everybody who knows and understands the big opposition on Edgewood Road to putting Edgewood Road through and making it a connector route, whether it has a state route designation or not. We have had truck, truck traffic on Edgewood Road for a number of years, and finally, the city has done a better job of getting that truck traffic off of Edgewood Road. But we still have truck traffic. And the police department has not done a good job of ticketing the trucks when we have them. Over, over and over again, the trucks have been followed to their destination, and they always seem to only get a warning. I don't understand why they're not getting a ticket. But beyond that, if you open up Edgewood Road to 36, you can count on the fact we're going to have a lot of trucks coming across Edgewood Road. And that's, that's a big no-no for a residential neighborhood. The other thing that a lot of residents are not in favor of is the sidewalks. Sure, we need water lines, sure, we need sewer lines, all of that's good. Improving the surface of the street, not widening it. But you've got 40-foot right-of-way all the way to Sugar Street. It doesn't widen at New Gambier Road to 60 feet, and that was proven a while back. So the problem with the sidewalks particularly, had quite a bit of width needed to do the project, and the houses, so many of them are so close to the street, that's a big part of your problem with making it not only a thoroughfare, but making it multimodal, if that's the definition, by putting sidewalks in. Finally, the other question I have is, as I understand it, reading the details, you already have $2 million from the state of Ohio, and $680,000, I don't remember, it's a C, C whatever. If this is only for design, why do you need another $3.1 million? And why are you calling it an emergency? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Robert Beck, I live at 10 Woodside Drive in Mount Vernon, and I come with the document, and after this presentation, I'm shifting also. Any explanation, it was very appreciative. But stepping back on my first point, that why is this declared an emergency? That I was here months ago, and when it got, whatever it was, got to a third reading, and the discussion was, well, we can't change it at the third reading. We brought it up at the first reading, and it's not changed now. So, you know, for, for all the reasons that people have, you know, talked about, I guess either, you know, just come out and say why you're declaring an emergency, because we understand it as so that, so that we can't fight it. That's, that's the only reason we can see. Because there is, you know, the utilities, they can be repaired, we just, you know, as people and citizens, we don't understand what this emergency is and why you're declaring an emergency. That's my first question. So if we had the map about the water breaks, they said there was 119 breaks, but over what period of time? And the map seemed to show that most of the breaks were from High Street over to 36, where, you know, we're talking about the first portion of the project, which is 229 to High Street. But even this half a project, if the whole, the whole deal is you, you want to cut this road through, which that's what a lot of us are against. But so why would you, you pay for a study to do half a project? And then, you know, are we really going to do all this again for the second half? Or when we were talking about bypasses, I couldn't believe someone was talking about a center, center run road, that, you know, that, for traffic to go, go through that way, that just doesn't make sense at all. But it seems like you all have an idea, there's somewhere, there, there's a map, somewhere, you know, there's ideas, there's processes. And I think it was mentioned, if, if, you know, everyone just lays out the map in, in front of us and explains what, what you're thinking of, and, you know, it makes it a little more easier to comprehend than, than bits and pieces that, you know, just, just really don't mesh together. Like a, a traffic count rattled off 4,500 and some cars in a day, but yet, never seen them little wires that people go over to, 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 the count that have been on other roads when they count things. So somehow, we got a value, but how old is that? And if, if people give you information, you know, how, you know, you have to document it, I guess, it, in this day and age, that everyone wants to know, you know, where and how good it is, and to be able to do a way forward. But again, thank you for listening to me, and having, all this extra information did change things, so I kind of apologize for that, but.
Thank you.
We still have a long way to go, I think. Thank you.
Stan Wood, 1011 East Chestnut Street in Mount Vernon. And I am standing here to state my position in opposition of Resolution 2024-23. But in doing that, I do want to say without question that I and my wife recognize the work of the city council, the Mount Vernon city administration, and how they're seeking best solutions for our needs as a community. And we do thank them for the kind of time and attention that they're giving to this. I believe there are no easy answers to some of the questions that all are raising, that you are trying to address and that we are trying to address. And I do believe that as residents, we're responsible to identify areas of our concern and possible consequences to us, and how they may be related to any legislative action. I would like to just highlight a couple of items that are included in an email. I corrected some things that happened when I sent off the email, and it, and it didn't open up correctly, so I tried to revise those so that the council and the administration has, has those forms. Two items in particular I would like to mention. One is that in the fact sheet that we received a few days ago, the question of, of traffic congestion was mentioned. As someone who's lived on the corner of Edgewood and Chestnut since 1986, I'm well aware of the kind of traffic that we have there, even today, and can only imagine what would happen if we were to open that through to Coshockton Avenue. I don't even want to imagine what that would be like. Furthermore, I may have stated this the other evening, I have to wonder what the addition of another intersection on Coshockton Road would be, right there in that area that is already congested with light, light standards and so on. I'm not sure that that's a solution to traffic flow either for Coshockton or Edgewood or getting from the south side to the other side of town. The other item I would like to highlight, and we've been addressing it, I know the speakers in the committee meeting were talking around this area, but a quotation that I found in the Knox pages from the August 24, 2023 edition, they quoted Brian Ball as saying that although ultimately, the thought is to root traffic from Coshockton to Ohio 229 via Upper Gilcrest and Ohio Eastern Star Roads, the project is long-term. And I suppose, really, the question that I have now is, with the time and effort and money that we're spending right now, why aren't we moving ahead with that plan? And, and looking at, yes, perhaps needed improvements, definitely needed improvements in infrastructure, but not opening through to Coshockton at this time, but rather moving ahead to the plan that we've heard about for so many years? Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't transition well before, so this is on housing on Upper Gilcrest, and Marcia
Yes, I live at 12848 Upper Gilcrest Road, and talking about the, I went to the municipal planning meeting, but I can't go to it this week. They tabled it, but they're talking about the new development coming in. They tabled it, but they're talking about the new development coming in of 108, you know, villas. The guy from Danbury is going to be putting that in, Lemon. And my question is, like, the city annexed that property in, you know, when they took it from Monroe Township, where all these apartments and that are going in for this housing. But my question is, why is the city not obiding, making them have a housing, you know, allowance, or not allowance, but HOA? Why is the city not doing a shade tree? Why is the city not saying the roads have to be done by city standards? It's like you annexed it in, but now these companies can do whatever they want. They don't have to have any particular guidelines from the city. So that's what I'm asking, you know. I know the municipal planning is, they tabled it last time. But still, even at that meeting, they were talking about, you know, the shade tree came up. They didn't have, they don't, nobody's making them do that. So my question is, why do they not have to abide by that? So that's what I'm just asking about, whether it be the roads, you know. I mean, now, Upper Gilcrest Road at the end down there in Koshakton, you're talking about bringing Edgewood in. But, you know, Brian said at one of the meetings that the money is there, but they just haven't got the plan figured out yet, if I understood him right. Shouldn't we have the plan figured out before we let these developers come in and start building whatever they want? I mean, we're going to have lots of traffic on that road now. And how much road frontage are they going to take to make the road wider for the people that live down there? Whether it's, you know, Slayball, he's already got his stuff in, but, you know, the other people that are, you know, coming in there. So that's what I'm asking, if the city can help and, you know, make the people that are coming in abide by what they have to do.
Thank you. Okay, we've made it through everybody that I have here. So we are going to move on to the legislative portion of the meeting. Counsel, you have the agenda items in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I will show it approved by consensus. We have no resolutions for third reading tonight. We have one for second reading, Resolution 2024-23. Mr. Hill, I can get you to read these by number and title only, please.
Resolution number 2024-23, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation and improvement of Edgewood Road, KNOCR 63A 0.00, and declaring any emergency.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, we're going to give this a second reading this evening. And we're going to also call for another 15-minute meeting at the March 25 session.
Resolution 2024-23 receives its second reading. We have some resolutions for first reading, Resolution 2024-28. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-28, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to dispose of vehicles in the police department not needed for public use by the City of Mount Vernon, and declaring any emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Siebel.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number 2024-28 to its third and final reading.
I guess I'll second that. And ask if there's any discussion on the suspension of the rules. If not, Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution number 2024-28.
Second. Any discussion? This is going to be a long evening.
Okay, Tanner. Would you like to talk about this?
Well, I'm sure everybody in this room would love me to not talk about this. So I'll be very brief and just say that we have about six assets here that now that we no longer need, we will go with GOV deals and make sure that they have life somewhere else. Any other questions, Counsel? We've done this before.
Okay. If not, Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-28 is adopted. Next, we have Resolution 2024-29. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-29, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio to purchase equipment for the Public Works Department and declaring any emergency.
And we have this. Mrs. Siebel.
I would like to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number 2024-29 to its third and final reading.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion on the suspension of the rules? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mrs. Siebel.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution number 2024-29.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Okay, well, maybe somebody here, Tanner, would like to start a business with that truck, with the snow plow, or they've got a...
They would have to outbid us because we want to buy this one. So we need a one-ton dump truck with a snow package, a leaf vacuum machine, and a mini excavator with a trailer to move it around because otherwise we'd just have to leave it in the garage. Not a whole lot of good that would do. So these are those things, some of those bigger assets that we talked about and the appropriations, we've already kind of covered this. So I do not want to belabor this. Any other questions? It's critical to our operations in the Public Works Department. And probably Aaron would bum it, too.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-29 is adopted. And we'll move to Resolution 2024-30. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-30, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to sell by sealed bid or dispose of equipment in the Public Works Department not needed for public use by the City of Mount Vernon, and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Siebel.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number 2024-30 to its third and final reading.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Mrs. Siebel.
I move to adopt Resolution number 2024-30.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Okay, Tanner, now we've got three other items we want to...
So we're getting rid of these. So if anybody out there wants a dump truck or a new Holland Workmaster mower, there you are. So same situation.
We're cleaning house.
Yeah, we are. Spring cleaning. Tammy, you're doing great. All right.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-30 is adopted. Resolution 2024-31. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-31, a resolution stating the opposition of the Council of the City of Mount Vernon to the proposed Frasier Solar Energy Development Project, partially within the boundaries of the City of Mount Vernon, and declaring any emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Madam President. Is that what we say? I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2024-31 to its third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
So the reason for the suspension is because of how soon the Ohio Power Siting Board will be meeting. I know that I have heard from some individuals that think that this is too fast. But given that Frasier had been meeting with administration back in 2022, I think that this is plenty of time for Counsel to make a decision. And I know that it's difficult for newer Counsel members when there is such a history to come in. So I would like to recognize that not all Counsel members have the same understanding of what has happened in this process.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
I will be voting no on this. And that is purely from the perspective, as Ms. Keener has pointed out. I have heard from multiple individuals in my neck of the woods. I know good people on both sides of the issue. And I really do think that it deserves more...
We're just voting on the suspension of the rules?
I guess. Yes. This is my reason for voting no on the suspension. Well, being an auctioneer, you know, you put me in front of the microphone. That's right. No, all of that aside, no, I just, I really would have liked to have seen more conversation on this before we actually went to a vote. So that was my reasoning for voting no on it.
Okay, with a six-to-one vote, the rules are suspended. Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mrs. President. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-31.
Second motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So I would like to say thank you for everybody who came out tonight. I think that there was a gentleman from Gambier, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. But you put it so well when you talked about how solar would be great for brownfields, rooftops, and parking lots. And I think that that is such a good point for the stewardship that we would like to see of the land. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
I will be voting yes and giving the reason that I agree with some aspects of this. There is some of the wording that I did not agree with. But that being said, one of the things I will just take a moment to say, I have not been a fan of the attitude and the dialogue from some of the individuals that I have talked to on both sides of this issue. And I would just encourage you all as fellow citizens of the county to realize that we're all neighbors, we're all in this together, and that there are a great many of us that are trying to make the best decision that we believe is going to improve our community. And I do have some concerns with this when it comes to property rights. And I would strongly urge us to consider, very carefully, to be very cautious about moving forward in this direction with any other resolutions along these lines in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Resolution 2024-31 is adopted. We'll move on to Resolution, we'll move on to Resolution 2024-32. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-32, a resolution appointing representatives for City Council to the City's Housing Council and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mrs. President. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2024-32 to its third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
The reasoning for suspending the rules is because this Housing Council will be meeting in the near future. And I think that it's important to update who are going as our representatives, specifically since there is a member of Counsel as one of the representatives here.
Thank you. Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mrs. Keener.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-32.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mrs. President. I'm going to pass this to the Mayor and Rob because they understand very well what the City's Housing Council does and the importance of these individuals to be on this.
I will explain the, first of all, this is Counsel's appointment. This is not the Mayor's appointment, or this is not the Housing Council's appointment as well, as they can pick an at-large. So what the Housing Council does is it will review the applications that have been made from the Community Reinvestment Area, applications, the CRA, for tax abatements, to see that the work is completed in order to qualify for the abatement for the time that has been applied for. We will be meeting very soon, I believe.
Next week.
I'm going to look at, Mr. Scott, we have to have that report to the Tax Incentive Review Commission. I think we have to have it. Anyway, we've got some...
I think April was scheduled.
Okay, yeah.
The meeting is in March. The report is due to the Tax Incentive Review in early April.
Right.
Which is why we chose the date in March. And so that's why we needed to get Counsel, to get their new Counsel member on board.
That's precisely the reason.
So the Counsel representative will be Mr. Mahan, and then the Community Representative will be Ms. Marth. She had been up previously. She's been very active in the county, and I think she will be a fantastic representative for the city. And for Counsel, sorry.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Mr. Ron, should I vote on this, since I'm named?
You can because you're representing Counsel, not in your individual capacity.
Thank you. Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The motion is, our resolution is adopted. We'll move on to Resolution 2024-33. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-33, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio to enter into contract with Gray Matter Systems LLC for water plant control system Phase 7-RK-1 cabinet replacement, and declaring any emergency.
Mr. Ruckman.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to give this its first reading and request a five-minute committee meeting at the next council meeting.
Resolution 2024-33 receives its first reading. Next is Resolution 2024-34. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-34, a resolution to make appropriations for current expenses in said resolution supplements the interim appropriations and other expenditures for the City of Mount Vernon, State of Ohio, during fiscal year ending December 31, 2024.
Mrs. Siebel.
I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number 2024-34 to its third and final reading.
Second. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mrs. Siebel.
I move to adopt Resolution number 2024-34.
Second. Mrs. Siebel.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, we're going to talk about the municipal court.
We are. Thank you, Mrs. Siebel. And Counsel, during your appropriations bill that we, our largest one that you guys just adopted at your previous meeting, we have a few line items that were not included in that section. It happens to be our grant program in our municipal court. So we'd like for Counsel to give consideration for the funding for the 2024 year, and that way they can continue with their operations. Total amount is $75,950 for the year.
Any questions?
No further discussion? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-34 is adopted. We'll move to Resolution 2024-35. Mr. Hill?
Resolution number 2024-35, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Thank you. Mrs. Seville?
I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number 2024-35 to its third and final reading.
Second. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mrs. Seville?
I move to adopt Resolution number 2024-35.
I will second that. Any discussion?
Yes. Now, Terry, we're gonna talk about $60.
We are, but we think it's very important, and that we'd like for our people here in our community, as well those who are with us tonight, to know that PAC United, and that is Police and Kids Program, has been very instrumental throughout our community for the last several years, and we appreciate what they have done. In this particular case, Flappers had a fundraising event and was willing to appropriate and distribute to the city $60, $60 in addition to the funding they have already received throughout the years, and we appreciate what Flappers has done in their efforts for PAC United.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
No further discussion. Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-35 is adopted. That ends our ordinances for the evening. We have known for, I'm sorry, that ends our resolutions for the evening. We'll move to ordinances. We have none for third reading. We have several for second reading. We'll start with ordinance number 2024-8. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-8, an ordinance changing the job title wastewater superintendent to assistant director of utilities wastewater and declaring any emergency.
Thank you. I will move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2024-08 to its third and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-08.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's late.
Whoever.
Any discussion? Do we wanna discuss this? Do we have anything to say?
It's just housekeeping. We're trying to keep a uniform job titles.
Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-08 is adopted. We'll move to ordinance 2024-09. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-09, an ordinance fixing the number of hourly employees of the City of Mount Vernon in the Public Works and Engineers Departments and declaring any emergency.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2024-09 to its third and final reading.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-09.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Questions?
Second. She-
Yes, she did.
She did. I seconded. She did this time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mine too.
It'll be a very silly meeting.
Okay. I think we discussed this in committee meeting earlier, so there's no further questions. Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-09 is adopted. We'll move to ordinance 2024-10. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance establishing the position of human resources generalist, setting compensation benefits and terms of employment, and declaring any emergency.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2024-10 to its third and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-10.
Second. Getting late, guys.
Any discussion?
Getting punchy.
Any other questions on this one? All right. Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
I'm gonna copy yours here. I'm gonna vote no on this only because I'm worried about this department growing as quickly as it did. We just started this two years ago, but, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Six to one, the ordinance is adopted. We'll move to ordinance 2024-11. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-11, an ordinance to amend Chapter 901 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Mount Vernon regarding street openings and declaring any emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Severance?
Yes, I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2024-11 to its third and final reading.
Second.
The motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mr. Severance?
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance 2024-11.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Law Director Boren, would you please fill us in here a little bit with this, please?
Mr. Ball. Mr. Ball and I have worked to rewrite Chapter 901 of the Codified Ordances. This is mostly because what happens is like a, we have several large utilities which are coming in to dig up our roads, and before they do that, they have to submit plans to engineering. And those plans, before they can, to be reviewed, take a lot of work and time from our engineering department. And right now, we are not capturing the amount of work that is required, the cost for the amount of work it takes for us to review this. And this rewritten legislation will allow us to properly bill those utilities for the amount of work that the engineering department is putting in so that they can put their new, their new project into our city.
So is this a typical procedure for other municipalities to do?
Yeah, our, our stuff is, our previous, our existing ordinance is significantly out of date. We're charging, you know, like if Columbia Gas does a project that's seven blocks, it's $50. If you wanted to put a driveway to your house, it's $50. So, if they do something wrong, we have to put a burden of proof together to physically put the person in jail, which will be laughed at, because they, all of the other municipalities that we've looked at have modernized this to not be, you know, a jail crime. It's a fine. So, we're updating the fees for large projects. We're changing it to fines and not jail.
Andy Griffith.
Doesn't make sense. And we've, we've done a similar, the stormwater was the same way. I'll look at Rob. I think we had very small fines, and then it was 10 days in jail, which we're not, we're not set up to do that. We are not gonna take time away and have the police department investigating stormwater violations or street openings.
And judge that for yells on this one, we do that.
Yeah.
Looking at Kit, he says no, so.
Yeah, so, the idea is to modernize this to where we can charge impact fees for larger projects.
Yes.
More than the $50.
This is a slam dunk in the words of a basketball season, right? We need to do this.
Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-11 is adopted. We'll move to ordinance 2024-12. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-12, an ordinance establishing compensation benefits and terms of employment for the assistant fire chief and declaring any emergency.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2024-12 to its third and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Move to adopt ordinance 2024-12.
Second.
Any discussion? Good. Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-12 is adopted. Now we move to ordinances for first reading, starting with ordinance 2024-13. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-13, an ordinance creating the Mount Vernon Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Fund Board and declaring any emergency.
Mr. Mahan?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to give this its first reading, and, Mr. Hill, I'm gonna need a five-minute committee meeting. We need to invite the chief to help us understand what we're doing here.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-13 receives its first reading. Move to ordinance 2024-14. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-14, an ordinance fixing the number, wages and benefits of hourly non-bargaining unit employees of the City of Mount Vernon effective January 1, 2024, and declaring any emergency.
Can we give this its first reading? I shall do so, thank you. Do we need a committee meeting for this? How long do you need?
Ten.
Ten minutes, please? Ordinance 2024-14 receives its first reading. Moving to ordinance 2024-15. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-15, an ordinance establishing compensation benefits and terms of employment for the first deputy auditor and declaring any emergency.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2024-15 to its third and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The rules are suspended. Move to adopt ordinance 2024-15.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments on this?
Mr. Scott, if he'd like.
Thank you, Mrs. Woods and council. This would be an addition to our staff. The position that we're looking at is going to be a salaried position, and that comes with higher credentials of what we're looking for in our, in our office here. For years, a number of years that I've been here, I've been doing a lot of this extra work, and it's come to the time where we need to actually distribute some of this work amongst our department. And with that, we'll be able to, I believe to think that we're gonna be able to have a little bit more information available to you folks. It's difficult when we're trying to work through a, let's say, a three- to a five-year projection program. When you only have three people working, it's very challenging to, to keep up with what's going on in today's world. Back when I started in 1995, the capacity was very adequate. Now, we have gone 30 years into the future, and certainly you guys are very much aware of what's going on and has gone on through the last 30 years as well. So, I appreciate council's efforts in this endeavor, and certainly will help us get back up on track again. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Hill?
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-15 is adopted. We'll move to ordinance 2024-16. Mr. Hill, I apologize.
Ordinance number 2024-16, an ordinance establishing compensation for supervisory and professional personnel effective January 1, 2024, and declaring any emergency.
Thank you. We'll give this a first reading, and you need a committee, 15 committee meeting, please? 15-minute committee meeting. Oh, boy. So, we've reached the end of our ordinances. We'll move to remarks from administration.
Thank you, Madam President pro tem. Well done, I must say. Yeoman's work there. Well done. And council, I have four items I just want to let you know of. We have been receiving a number of complaints from a company that is a waste removal, quick rent it, anyway. We have notified our police department, so they are aware of that, too. Anyway, if you do have questions on that, and there's, it's business, I don't know, Mr. Boren might be able to offer advice here on this as well.
Well, I've discussed the matter with Lieutenant Tharp, the administrative supervisor in the police department, and according to the information that we have, the company has changed hands, and we're having some difficulty getting in touch with the current people who are now running it, and, so we'll see.
Well, we, we continue to follow that, council, just so you know. If you, if you are stopped out there, hey, this, we only know what, what we can find out, so. Anyway, that's the first thing. Secondly, the, the gas aggregation letter, everyone's favorite subject, went out recently. And so, there is no change in the service provider. So, if you are in already, you do not have to do a thing. You will get the discounted rate. So, it is, again, we, we, our broker is strongly advising us to do another 12-month contract, wait out, see what happens with the, with the, the pricing and so forth. So, it is, there is, if you absolutely do not want the government stepping in and being in charge of your utility bill, you have every right to opt out. That is fine with me. I am just doing what you all told the mayor to do in 2012, which is to bargain for a cut rate here on this. So, anyway, there are, there are options to, to opt out of that. If you did opt out last year and you want in, you're gonna have to call them and to participate in it, because since there's no change in the provider, and you're, if you're out, you're not, you're not going to get that advantage, so. Anyhow. Third, Catherine Street project is underway?
Yeah.
Yay? That's great.
There's now a porta potty in front of my house.
Actually, I think we actually are seeing some, some improvements in the process of how this is done from, from the South Catherine Street job. So, anyway, we're looking forward to that. And, Mr. Miller, I'm sorry I didn't get with you beforehand, but we will have to talk about the High Waltham Water Park updates and, and what we plan for this, this coming year. I would like to request some committee time next, at the next council meeting. And I'm looking at my friend Sarah Lynn over there, Sue, who has been helping us out with the marketing of that. So, yeah, I keep, I have you on my to-call list, and I get pulled. So, anyway, we'll, we'll talk afterwards, Sarah Lynn. Thank you for that. Anyway, Madam President, again, well done tonight.
Thank you.
That is all.
Mr. Sayers?
A gift to all of Mount Vernon. I have nothing further.